I miss.
City of Elrod recess council meeting for Monday, January 24th has been done. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda is the water sewer termination request. Do we have any?
We have zero requests.
Zero requests. Next item of the petitions and delegations, members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter related to city business not listed on the agenda. Comments that are discussed under petitions and delegations may or may not be acted upon by the council during this meeting. So three minute time limit, please stand and wait to be recognized by the mayor. You must state your name and address. I'll, I'll time you. I'll try to give you a nice friendly wave if you're, if you're getting close to three minutes, but we really want to keep it close to three minutes as we can. Okay, is that all right everybody? All right.
Mine's maybe four.
Okay. But I'll just go ahead. All right, is there someone who'd like to go first?
We'll let Mr. Barta start.
To start with.
Name and address, please.
Brad Barta, nine twenty-five thirteen from, some of these questions at the beginning are kind of rhetorical, so if you want to answer them later. Go ahead and stand.
You're good. I got you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Brad Barta, born and raised here. I am front of you today to petition the upcoming item of code rec fee changes listed on the agenda, focusing on the membership and travel team fees. To give you a little background of myself, I coach or have coached a lot of rec fee teams, travel teams, ranging from T-ball, softball, baseball, soccer, volleyball, and basketball. I have a couple of questions about proposed fee changes to start off with. Can you explain the purpose of the travel team $100 usage? Why are the travel teams getting singled out for gym or ball field use? What will the membership fee go towards? The American, the American council needs to strongly look at these fees, how much is being charged and who is really getting penalized? I understand there needs to be some type of membership of fees costs that could be a huge impact for some of these parents and coaches. These parents, coaches, and including myself there in front of you tonight have put in a lot of time into our youth. This is all donated time. On a typical week, I'm in the gym, whether it be for practices or games, five days out of the week. I spend more time prepping, making practice plans, watching game film, and showing the game film to my players. I would currently be in the gym right now coaching and leading our youth, but I'm in front of you standing up and supporting the youth, future youth, and future barricades. We as travel coaches do not charge a fee to be on the team. We are not running a business. These coaches that are running or going to run the travel teams are the same people that coach rec league teams. If you didn't have these individuals, you wouldn't have anyone to coach your rec league teams. To give you, to you an example, some of these coaches wanted to take a sport season off of coaching and didn't list themselves as a coach on the registration form, but they ended up being the head coach of the team because no one else would coach. These are the same individuals that are strongly involved with our community. For doing what these coaches and parents are doing for this city and community, our thank you to them, as we are going to start charging you for helping out our youth. Aren't we supposed to guide our youth and future youth as much as possible? I'm a supporter of rec leagues and players. Rec sports are not revenue. Kids have different skills levels. It's like you are penalizing the student athletes that are ready to compete at the next level. I am saying this before you because it has been brought to my attention that each travel team kids are getting singled out because they are not playing rec. Like I said in my previous statement, I am a supporter of rec department. A couple of years ago, we were going to start our own travel team baseball. We raised a little bit of money, not nearly enough for how much everything was going to cost. Unfortunately, when COVID hit, we were not able to have practices due to group size.
Excuse me, Brad. Thank you. All right, who will the next person be?
Hey, I am Laura Kyler. My address is nine fifteen Kyler, one eleven, Elsworth, Kansas. And I am also involved heavily in the rec department as a coach. And I'm going to finish, Brad, so. So every year through the school, I fill out a contract request stating my purpose for the use of the facilities. Don't, they don't charge me because I'm not running a business for my profitable organization. These are all local USD three twenty-seven kits. They are, these are not kids we are bringing in from different towns or forming team. In, if money is the issue, then why don't we look at the other ways of funding the rec department? Instead of nickel and diming these kids, parents and coaches that have given so much time. From what I know, there is currently only two travel teams. How far is $200 going to go? If council decides to pass all of the new rest charges, in theory, these parents and coaches will have to pay three or four times, different times, ranging from sales tax, property tax, membership fees, and travel team fees. That doesn't count to the families that have multiple kids on travel teams. I would like to leave you with one final thought. Are we supposed to be supportive of our youth and future youth, or do you want to grow further apart from, further apart as a community? Not work together and be thankful, and be thankful for what these parents and coaches have given. I will be here when this item comes up on the agenda in the case there is more questions, more topics to discuss. Thank you for your time and consideration. Could you please address the previous questions asked when this item comes up on the agenda again? And I will redo the questions. Can you explain the purpose of the travel team's $100 usage fee? Why are the travel teams getting singled out for the gym or baseball use or field use? What will the membership be go for, go towards? I like to add in the fact of my, my kids, we use rec, very great fundamental foundational skills. And then to add on, you do have to expose them to different things and traveling to different parts of Kansas and even getting to experience different parts of the country is what club ball can do. And so that gets cost, but it would be an additional fee on top of that.
Thank you, Laura. Is there someone else on the same subject that likes to be one of?
So my name is Amber Hashdav. Address is four sixteen Bradley, here in Ellsworth. And this is Ryan Plutter. I think he offers a unique spin on things as a former council member. And we apologize for not being able to attend in person. So he says, dear mayor and members of the city council, apologies, apologies for being unable to attend meeting in person as a current assistant high school basketball coach and rec coach, as well as a former member of city council and former coach of travel basketball team. I may be able to share a unique perspective regarding the proposal to change local travel teams to utilize the city hall. In general, we see firsthand how much further along, not just skill wise, but understanding of the game, kids with experience competing beyond rec sport have. In short, they enter high school more prepared, which obviously helps Ellsworth better able to compete. I along, I along with two others helped coach a travel team, a travel basketball team, of currently grade girls when they were in fifth and sixth grade. They have had a great year at athletics this year, recently finishing the basketball season as state champ and only one loss. I would like to think that their experience, they had competing at a high level contributed in a small part to that success. In their sixth grade year, they set a goal to qualify for a state tournament in Wichita. They did qualify and played well. Most importantly to me though, was the memories made over the weekend. The girls had a fun time staying at a hotel together and bonding. I still have girls from that team and their family members telling me how much fun that was. The memories made, it's something they won't ever forget. That made every second of us, made every second of time of us coaches put into these two years completely worth it. The city and school district need to support each other in any way possible for the benefit of our community and youth. Implementing fees to use a facility that while better than nothing is below standard as a team practice facility sends the wrong message. Many of hardworking generous citizens of Ellsworth are those that help support our recreation department with their time and resources to coach. Many of these same people are also willing to stretch themselves even more than to coach travel teams for any given part of the year. On top of rec. Is it worth upsetting some of these community members when it can already be a challenge to find enough people to volunteer and coach rec sports? Is it worth shooting ourselves in the foot even more with the communities we compete against by disincentivizing those who have the talent and desire to compete beyond rec in return for what amounts to around the year in revenue in terms of the overall size of the city budget? The common sense answer, in my opinion, is.
Amber, I'm sorry, you're getting the title.
Okay, common sense answer is no, and it makes no sense at all. Thank you for your review and consideration.
Is there anyone else, or is, come on up?
My name is Kelsey Place and my address is four twelve East Ninth Street in Ellsworth. And I just want to say that I strongly support what Brad, Laura, and Amber have said.
Thank you, Kelsey. Is that what your name?
Oh, me.
Okay, okay. Is that it for petitions, delegations, or anybody else that wants to address the council? All right, so move on to unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor, we have no unfinished business for this evening.
No unfinished business?
No.
Okay. On new business, authorization to hire a police officer.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, the chief and I discussed this briefly at the last meeting. The justification is more so in, while our police officers will never admit that burnout is a real thing and they're exceptionally dedicated to to the city and to their profession, I know as well as anyone that, you know, twelve hour days wear on someone after a while and it, it really doesn't do them any good to take twelve hours vacation and make it up by working twenty-four hours over the next period. So in a in an effort to alleviate the, those stressors as well as protect them from themselves, we're recommending the addition of a additional swing shift officer. Right now we have Captain Bernard who works a swing shift that, that covers down, but we, we believe that given the revenue surplus from last year and the, the need to protect our employees, that this is a plausible and justified addition. The chief has tried for several months to recruit and obtain part-time police officers, but as with every other small town in Kansas, they're, they're scarce, especially for with qualified personnel. So anything else you want to add to that?
Superbad questions, yes. Mr. Carter, I said, in last year's budget session, we did budget for a couple of part-time officers for so many hours and I greatly appreciate that. It's just city administrator, it's just tough to find that person that, that already works forty hour a week job. And then you're calling them saying, hey, we work next Tuesday from this time to this time. And I got a full-time job, I have to work that day. I, I could take vacation, I guess. So they're taking vacation from a full-time job that kind of covered shit for us and it's, it, it's very difficult. I know all the agencies in our area, not just in Ellsworth County, but surrounding counties, Fred, Cheese, and indoor sharers. And it's, it's hard enough to hire a full-time officer, but even more so difficult to find somebody that's part-time. You know, the part-time person you're finding is already a full-time officer somewhere else, having given up their days off. Definitely a pity for our own, which creates an additional burnout for somebody else's agents. So it's been rather difficult to try to fill those few positions that you guys have broken.
So by filling a full-time position, how much of the way on your part-time need is that?
It basically would kind of do away with our part-time. I would take that money that we set aside, that we budget for part-time to fill our, our full-time. I have one person on the books right now is a part-time officer, it's Officer Tillitt. He's been here come and go over the years. His pretty much only time that he can work was either very long-term outside of the weekend plan, or he plans to work in downtown for us. We try to put on an additional staffing. So I would, it doesn't cost anything to have an officer sitting on the books, so to speak, from a part-time perspective, where I would probably keep Officer Tillitt just as that for downtown, just bringing that into the body. It's, nobody wants to be coughing their pants down, you know, on activity in order to fit. So I would, I would probably ask that if it was to keep them, that they would certainly just be a very scarce. And the only thing we would have, then it would be downtown hours and then two training hours each year, stuff that you're required to have by year for the, for the part-time officer. And they're not required to have the same hours that we are. They're only required to have two and a half hours for rich profiling and then the hour of the range. There's not a huge overhead. But I would not look at bringing in the city trying to fill those full-time plus part-time, part-time plus more hours, but not continue that endeavor.
We have a discussion on the item. Jessica?
No.
Ms. Hanson?
No.
And it looks like you've had some interest in the full-time positions.
Yes, and you know, it's, I've, I've had lots of interest over the years. It's, it's not just so much from anybody in this area, but even, you know, I have an officer that I, that I worked with that hired from another county and he's got a couple of friends that, if there's an opening, please let us know. I hate to sound egotistical or whatever, but I tend to let my officers do their job and that's all I expect of them. I try to give them the free opportunity to do their job and the city supports us in that. And it's, sometimes I don't feel like, you don't feel like somebody's always watching over you, covering over you, the place you want to be, and you kind of created that environment here. We actually have a great group of officers and it's kind of gotten out there. So I feel that it's going to be much easier to fill a whole-time position.
Anyone else have anything? Would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to the offer of hiring an additional police officer to the permanent position.
Mr. Stritchfield has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson's made a second. Motion carries. Oh, sorry. Hold on one second. Hearing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. So we will be hiring any police officer. That's, that's item, agenda item number twenty-two dash zero twelve has passed.
Thank you for your input. I'll say it from the next time, too.
All right. Yeah, this is the police vehicle purchase. We went over it last meeting a little bit.
Yeah. So in the nutshell, we kind of missed out on a couple, no fault of our own. I feel horrible that unfortunately it's the fault of our own or the city or anybody that's been involved. Just kind of reached out and gave some information. So KHP has offered up one of their huge vehicles. I usually think we all wish that away from that. I think it fully defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do when we purchase new. However, the current vehicle climate is very difficult. Many businesses trying to go buy a vehicle, or even a person's trying to buy a vehicle, new and or used. They're very difficult to come by. As of one more in July, it still has not been issued a VIN number, even though they still think it may be done by the end of March. So I'm going to hold my breath on that. So KHP has offered up one of their vehicles for sale. Generally, it's offered up as twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And that comes fully equipped, finds a radio or radar and a camera, which finds, has, has the lights, which require us to put our stickers on it. They're holding a check of our twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars of what we attempted to purchase the vehicle on. They're willing to waive that eleven hundred dollar difference. So gracious of them, let me tell you. But they're willing to waive that difference and then they'll provide us with a twenty-twenty Dodge Durango, silver colors, which would be to match our current fleet that we were going to, should be available middle of next month, middle to late of next month. Set to the one that we were looking at, that would be silver, is two in around the fourteenth or fifteenth of February. They'll go through with the mechanic wheels, these tires, with the tire control, life groups, batteries, stuff like that. They'll give the general maintenance and then it'll become available. So due to the current climate and in even to purchase what would be, their name on another, F-150, you're looking at thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is the difference of about seventy-five hundred dollars more than what we've already set aside for a purchase of a vehicle. So at this point, I'm willing to concede to go with the used vehicle because it's, what we'd be getting is a huge vehicle would be much more dependable than what we're trying to replace. The vehicle we're trying to replace right now.
Right, and there's, there would be a delay in any deal.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Anybody have any questions on this item?
Hey, Chief.
Go ahead.
Can you go over those numbers one more time? What it will usually cost and then what they're holding our check for?
Right, so what they normally, what they quoted me as their price to sell to another agency is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And then the check they're holding for us right now is roughly twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. He said it was eleven hundred and forty dollar difference or whatever. I don't have the exact amount in front of me that we have in the, on, on hold. It is about twenty-eight one ninety-two thirty-seven, I think. So I'm within that, that, that their, that their range.
Thank you.
And as far as, you can maybe explain this to me?
Yes, sir.
How do you know you're not getting the run?
You don't. And, and that's the unfortunate thing. I will say that's kind of what we ran into with the carbonated replaced, our point forty-four is prescribed by my arrival here by the, the, the previous police chief that came from the highway patrol. We really had nothing but a lot of minor, minor, however, but minor problems with the vehicle. That's kind of one of the reasons I wanted to get away from this stuff. However, I'm very fearful that our twenty-fourteen doors that needs four or five thousand dollars of work then to, we should have put it off because we knew there was a vehicle coming hopefully at some point in the tunnel that I'm going to have an officer around who will call it's going to die in there and have walked through that call and hopefully isn't at the verge of all. This unfortunately fills a need, this, this huge vehicle fills a need that we don't know whenever we're going to be filled, filled again by a new vehicle. That's just, you have to work that, you're absolutely right. I, I don't, this isn't my first idea, you know, I really don't want to do this, but we're kind of, it's kind of been forced again by no fault of our own, but it's just the overall market for used vehicles.
And are you guys able to see any photos of the vehicle?
No, and I mean, I could probably ask. They have, have took a round next picture of this car. I mean, you know, I purchased used, I would fill a car for another agency that I've worked. We got two charters when I was in Lake County and we had no problems with it. I mean, they both came with brand-new tires and brand-new batteries, we got them, they said needed them. So they, I feel like they, when they give, when they sell you something, they're giving you the best product they can give you because they want to continue their program and go on because if they don't have agencies buying new vehicles, then they're kind of stuck with them. They don't know what to do with it. So it's, it's, they, they try to do the best they can, but unfortunately most cars aren't completely wet every time they're driven. And a safety truck car is probably even more so because they're, the way they're driven up and down the interstate. So they try, but it's just like mine, like a car and auction, you just, you hope you're going to, I mean, I, I would venture to guess, make the assumption for sure that it is. But I go down there and I look at it and it's a complete, fast, working past. I think they would work with me, I think. You know, it's just, they haven't had a silver one coming in next month. I think, so they have a white one coming up here in the next couple of weeks. I just ask for silver because that's what the rest of our fleet is, is, except for that.
Hey, Chief. Hey, Chief. So is this going to be a sufficient vehicle for the police or is it one of those, we're just buying it to get by and then in a couple of years, we're going to be looking at doing something different?
Well, in a perfect world, it would be a stopgap for us, but at the end of the day, I mean, I would anticipate having it for a few years. And I, I would think, I can't speak for, you know, administration now or even however many years down the road, there might be a need for this vehicle for the city as an SUV. When we're done with it, that's for administration to drive to trainings or other departments to drive to trainings and driving one of the pickups to something else. I, I, I can't speak for that. It's a possibility, but it would offer a little bit more cargo room than a car would. But yeah, in a perfect world, it's a stopgap and as, as the market comes back around and hopefully in the next year or two, then we figure out how we're going to work through it. But the way the current climate is, I'd say we're going to have it four or five years, just like we're going to have in the rest of our cars.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Chief, how many miles are on it?
It'll be roughly forty-nine thousand five hundred. It'll be somewhere between forty-nine thousand and forty-nine thousand five hundred.
Oh, that ain't too bad.
You guys have like an area that you pay for how many miles you like to get out of it?
For us? No, because it varies so much. Like, for instance, like, you know, my truck's a twenty-twenty and I've got almost ten thousand miles on it. And, but it's only got two hundred and thirty hours. The twenty-nineteen has thirteen thousand miles on it, but it's got two hundred and thousand hours. You know, where, where an officer is, that's their office as well, you know. So the, the biggest thing for us probably, and I say us, a lot more than just pull us, it's so much a mile says it is hours, where the hours are just, they just, they're, they're harder on the car than miles. And they, they have this formula to use to figure out how many miles, how many miles. And I haven't looked it up in a while, but I know one time when I did study for, for fleet, most of our cars had over two hundred thousand miles on them by the hour meter, even though they were all less than a hundred thousand miles. So we don't currently have a threshold that we call hours or miles where we want to go. We were just hoping to go every five years, replace every car every five years. And then just, we were going with pickups, just getting traffic speed. We were going with pickups because once we'd used them, then we could ship them down to public works. They would have so much more benefit to the city when we were done with them. And the price we were getting for, for such a great price, you really couldn't pass up that system. Unfortunately, that system is kind of a teak in it because you're not able to get the, the microchips and everything else. So it's kind of, no. So we don't have an actual number. It's just kind of, this is one where it's costing us a little bit more money. It's time to move on from this one.
You have a discussion on the item? Like to make a motion for the used vehicle?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to accept the twenty-twenty Dodge Durango as a replacement vehicle for the police department.
Ms. Hanson has made the first motion. Can I get a second motion for the Dodge Durango?
I'll second that.
Councilman Bernard seconds the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll be getting a Dodge Durango for shake, Ron. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item of the agenda is basically corporate resolutions designated authorized signer on citizen state bank accounts.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is just a housekeeping measure, removing Mark Kennedy from the, the signers on the account and adding Mayor Finnegan. So we can do the motion on, and all the resolutions in one motion, A through H.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolutions twenty-two dash zero one two four, A through H, and give the signature on the.
Second it. Mr. Stritchfield has made a motion and Councilman Johnson has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All, all those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That is resolution twenty-two dash zero one three, that's corporate resolutions designated authorized signers on the citizen state bank accounts. And I believe this is the next item, what we were talking about earlier, the fee schedules. Real quick, sir, appreciate all of you coming in, you know, putting your thoughts together. That was really nice. Well done. And welcome you to come back anytime. You know, so that being said, is there any discussion about the fee schedules that what you heard tonight? And there's a lot involved in it, I'm sure, but Mr. Barta, would you like to?
I'll see your questions, so I can try to answer them for you. I'll try to write them down. All right, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor and Council. So the every rec registration, a portion of that money, those monies go not only to pay officials and uniforms, but also maintenance for the facility. So a preponderance of the hundred dollar usage is, would, would be toward the ancillary costs that go into. So a preponderance of the hundred dollar usage is, would, would be toward the ancillary costs that go into operating the facilities. And, um, while they're not using our officials, I mean, they are using the building, so, um, it would be somewhat unfair to have our rec league kids, uh, a portion of their fees being paid to cover these costs and not for the travel teams. I don't believe that we're singling out the, uh, the, uh, the travel teams. I think that our initial, uh, statement, uh, and I think Mr. Varda and Mr. Pesca and, uh, Ms. Place for coming in and talking to me about it, we were a little short sighted, uh, because we had originally said ten dollars an hour for travel teams to practice. And then, uh, we changed that to ten dollars for two and a half or three hours. And then when Mr. Varda laid out how much that was actually gonna cost per year per team, I was a travel ball parent, so I understand, it's, it's just, um, you're throwing hundreds after hundreds after hundreds. So, um, we did come up with the hundred dollars per year per team as a, uh, as a compromise to the original fee proposal. And, um, let's see. I think that, uh, Mr. Tenfren could, could chime in on this, but it, it's important for us to remember that, um, while we appreciate the work that's being done in the community and the volunteer time and, um, the impact that it makes on the youth, that from the city's perspective, we're in the recreation business, not in the privatized or travel sports business. So as a matter of equity, it, it is only fair that we charge some type of fee to those who are using the facility, uh, like we do to, to rec kids. And, um, if I can recall back a few months ago, we, in an effort to assist the, the travel teams, we did waive the, the peddlers fees for the, uh, the curb painting. And, um, I think in the past, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, um, we have always prioritized the facilities for the, uh, recreation teams and now moving forward with the new software that, and the ability to schedule online, these teams can also go in and, and schedule, uh, at the same rate without, there's, there's not gonna be a prioritization on the facilities for the recreation like it has been in the past. Is that correct, Ronnie? We're, we're, so, so if Mr. Varda's basketball team wants to practice every Tuesday from two to four. Oh, okay, well then, I was wrong. But we're, we're definitely not trying to shut out or, um, discourage our community volunteers, but there has to be some type of fee associated with using the facilities. I thought you had a lot more questions. I mean, if you'll, if you'll ask me, we'll, we'll do our best.
As have been a few of your travel teams in the past.
No.
No.
But once again. Those are fees.
If little Johnny's, if there's something going on in the gym, a little Johnny's coming down because he needs something to do until five o'clock. Do these changes, pretty much say, sorry Johnny, ain't going to gym unless you. Okay? Is that kind of, at the same time?
I can, let me answer that.
Okay.
I mean, basically kind of how we're doing that as during operating hours, say if they wanted to come down here and shoot, there wouldn't be a fee. And this is after operating hours, city hall or whatever, we decide out for rec center is, you know, we're not gonna charge a daily fee for somebody to come in, wants to shoot baskets. When I was saying like rec practices take a preference, I mean, I'm handcuffed too as far as my rec practices go. I mean, high school utilizes our gym every day of the week. If it's not practices, it's games. Um, I can't get into the gym till six o'clock. I mean, everybody here knows that. So, uh, you know, with the rec center, you know, right now basketball rules out there as well. So, I mean, that's gonna free up, you know, some available hours for practices and stuff. I appreciate everybody that's here, they've got phone calls from me, all when they're not on the list. You know, I'm always needing coaches, and these are the ones that step up. I mean, they know how much I appreciate them, it's a fitism for them, and, you know, who knows what kind of coaches I would get. And so, but.
That's huge. Well, I will say, it sounds like you, you guys are talking travel teams. When my, my son was on a travel team, it wasn't one month of practice. Their baseball traveling practices started in February. They'll just have them out there almost every day. So I mean, if you look at that from that standpoint, we need to be mindful that these teams are gonna have to possibly pay a hundred and sixty to two hundred dollars a month possibly, if it's anywhere like it used to be when my son played. And then I'm trying to be mindful of that, that those parents still have hotel costs on the weekend. And, you know, those types of expenses. When a lot of these, I, I feel like appropriate, I just feel some of them still. I don't know if it's possible to look at. Not every scenario is the same under that, so that's just, that, that's my concern.
Yeah, so if we take like a, the, the typical basketball team, eight kids on it, a hundred dollars a year per team comes out to about a dollar a month per kid is what the, the cost is. So it's, it's not, now, if, if we were paying, if we were gonna charge them like we had originally proposed, then yeah, it would have been, I mean, I think, uh, Mr. Varda told me like four hundred and fifty dollars a year, which is, is not being a service to them, but, um, the, the fees are, are fairly minute, I mean, um, I know Mr. Varda's got a, a question, so.
So you're good, you're good.
And Ms. Pesca?
I understand what you're saying, but it's pure flexibility. And the city partners with school and school, the city partner benefits from using school facilities for rec sports. I mean, they use them for volleyball, their rec season, they use the city, um, for the school soccer fields, for flag football, and, I mean, so the city benefits from partnering with the school. And, I mean, the amount of time that coaches put into this is volunteer to help propel our new sports because we're falling behind. And so for us, really, I think it's about principle. And I know for me, I'm not, I'm not willing to go to rec sports if concessions aren't made. I'll, I'll just be.
Mr. Varda, are we, are we taking questions during this time period, or is that?
Well, I mean, I think out of respect for them showing up, we should answer their questions.
What's, what's pressing, I mean, it's fine, but, Mr. Varda?
Mr. Johnson, uh, you said your kid played on a travel baseball team, was that all local kids? Uh, I think aside from what, what? These are all kids that go to school. These are all older kids. Um, to add to your money cost, we're paying a hundred and seventy-five to two twenty-five a tournament. We're playing in two to three tournaments a month. You've got fuel, hotel, gas, and food. Um, like in my previous statement, school doesn't charge us any. School doesn't charge them, and they have a special check mark, and I think just so the, the city hall, the corner on the city website also does too, if you're profitable, you know, or not, they look at that and they don't charge them. Now, other people come in, they got, uh, I think it's twirling class or something in, in grade school, they charge them. Cause they're, it's a business, it's business, we're not.
I'm gonna speak and, you know, in fact, to the school, with the city. I mean, yes, school likes to rec utilize our facilities. This is a, a topic that has been talked about with Mr. Davis and myself. You know, super attendants in the past, and, you know, it's no secret that school utilizes our facilities more than the city utilizes the schools. That's no secret, our D will tell you the same thing. You know, there isn't, we do charge the school certain fees for use the city hall because, you know, we're, my, my rec activities are taking a backseat to that, so I believe there should be a charge for them to use our facilities. Um, same way with the golf course, I mean, they're out there every day practicing, so there, there's a fee for them to, you know, utilize that as well. Um, you know, we even mentioned too that, you know, we're increasing our fee for city hall to the school, and they know that. You know, it hasn't been increased in, I've been here for twenty years, and it's been the same fee for twenty years. And, and so, you know, I'm totally rusty as well that, you know, if the school wants to charge us because we're not a fee, that, you know, that's the right thing. So, that's one reason why, you know, us as a city is charging the school. Because, I mean, they are getting a lot of priority out of our facilities.
You have a question, ma'am? What was your name?
I'm Stacy Young. Um, I was curious, is there still a membership fee on top of this traveling fee? Because I thought there was.
Yes, yeah, the, the, the membership fee is.
Just a hundred dollars, it would also be, if you're a single or a family, there would be that fee as well?
Yes.
Okay, so is, is that still a hundred dollars for family and maybe for single?
Yes.
Okay, so if our kids want to go down to the gym on not time, I, I guess more, and, and I'm in this traveling group, I coach, I do all that, I guess more, even more than that, I more think that that is a very high price. Just looking at, there's some families, if we took the median average of what people make around here for them to be able to have a child to want to come and practice, that, that's a large fee to pay a hundred dollars or fifty dollars for some, a lot of families in this area. And I'm not just talking the traveling stuff, I'm just, aside from that, just the membership fee.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm more again, um, I, I guess I wonder, uh, since high school has then have priority, um, if there are lots of traveling teams or several that would like to, how much of a value will they have if they want to pay? I'm gonna start saying on three down practices, all I have to do is sign it up. And so I want them three days a week because I want to get my team to be back on that level. I'm just thinking of some different obstacles that might come up with some of these things of signing it up. And is it going to be worth a team trying to have that money, um, go and pay for that fee and membership fee, because I might only get the gym for an hour and a half one day a month because someone, two people signed up earlier than me. Um, and my other second thing is, most of my rec coaching shirts were sponsored by the bank. So when it comes to jerseys, um, they are reusable ones that they're using for basketball and flag football, that like baseball, volleyball, they were all sponsored by the bank. Um, so that's where that money from reach or, 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 I guess I should say was. But other businesses have sponsored a lot of those jerseys, I guess I should say. So when it comes to that rec fee, I, I knew that was, okay, I, I have three kids that were going into these sports, and so it was a whatever, however, month, eighty dollars, eighty-five dollars a month, uh, on that five weeks that they would need to win that sport. Times baseball, baseball softball, soccer, basketball, volleyball, flag football, I mean, they love to do those activities. So now it's, where am I going to spend my hundred and fifty dollars? Am I going to spend it in our, or am I gonna take my kids, all three of them, unfortunately, to Salina, which have a humongous facility, the yard and fieldhouse, where I know that they can get into practice. Um, and they have a good facilities, so, and they accommodate a lot of different things, so that's, I guess.
You have a discussion on this, we're ready to go ahead and make a motion on this? Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. What is the point of the membership fee? Like, I understand to offset costs, but why would I want to take out a membership?
Um, for access to the facility after hours, so you get the key fob that you have now, or that, that we have out now. And, um, so outside of the, the normal hours, if you want to, to come in and, and play basketball or, or what, whatever the, the, your thing is. You know, we, we have kids in here some nights, uh, till around midnight, right? I mean, and I would much rather have these kids in our gym shooting basketball, um, together than hanging out, busting out windows and doing stuff I did when I was a teenager, so, um, that's, uh.
The only other thing I wanted to add is for the, the revenue that this would generate, is it worth it to offset so many parents and volunteers in our community? Um, and Ryan, as a former city council member, he would absolutely be there percent if not. Not only because he is a coach in rec and travel and high school, but from a city, city council perspective, it is not. And he, I mean, you heard the letter, so, um, there's a lot of other people that could have been here to represent, but unfortunately their work, they weren't allowed to be here.
You know, one thing too to consider with membership is, you know, that's just, a membership would be a key fob accessibility. You know, if you don't have that option, then we have to try to hire a hard time person, you know, at both facilities to oversee things.
I, I think, I think anybody in this group would say that this fob or this online may, we understand that there should be maybe a, a cost. But I think we would probably agree that a twenty-five dollar fee would be plenty. I mean, I think that's probably where we're at. And, and affordable to a lot of other people besides just us.
Just go back for a sec, the registration for the rec fee, you know, they're paying for refs, scorekeepers, jerseys or t-shirts, and buying the refs lunch that day. I'm not asking for any of that. And I don't see how you can charge, especially for the city hall. Correct? I understand a little bit of a membership, I think fifty and a hundred is way too much, but I don't see how you can charge a membership at the city hall. Um, and I don't, Rusty, I'm just asking a question. You know, we talked about, I think a hundred dollars for the travel team is silly. Um, was it a hundred dollars for the city hall too, or not?
Yeah, it, it included both.
Okay, because on the agenda, it does not say travel teams for a hundred at the city hall. It just has it under the red category.
And the, um, the intent is whether it be the fifty and a hundred for the personal and family membership now, or the hundred dollars a year per team is access to both facilities.
And just for the record, we made other phone calls to other cities and they thought that was, I think, thought that was ridiculous and didn't see how, that you, if you guys passed it, how that would be charged to, to the parent and coaches for use of the city halls. That's just not, that's not right.
What, what other cities did you call?
Um, Russell, Peston.
Claywell, I spoke with a board member, former board member who just got off there and just spoke about hall fields, so they don't charge on hall fields, that one city hall, that they would not charge a traveling team hall field.
Okay. I think we've kind of reached our limit on this topic, don't you? Anybody else have anything else to add? Uh, any other opinions or discussion on the matter? Ms. Hanson, Ms. Coates?
I don't think, maybe we should make a decision until we discuss this more, is my opinion.
We make a motion to table it then?
Well, if we're gonna table it, we don't need a motion. Do you, um, Ms. Hanson, are you, are you talking specifically the travel ball or the entire?
I'm talking, I think the entire thing, I think maybe we need to, I'm not saying there shouldn't be some fees, but I, maybe I agree that, yeah, the best place, you said our kids should be, you'd rather have them in the gym. Not every family can afford that, so I don't know, I mean, maybe we just need to do a little bit more discussing before we, in my opinion, vote on this.
That's what I agree with.
I would agree with that.
Mr. Renaud, you agree with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. All right, on to the next item.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is a, uh, special permit for, um, authorize the golf course to sell uh, alcohol at the rec center for the cornhole tournament in March. Is there anything else I, I need to say on that?
So, the rec center falls under one of the city home properties that can have alcohol beverages, and you're just asking for them to be able to sell beer, not liquor, um, just for the special event, so they have all the state forms ready to go. And then in the future, if they want to do this again, we would look at an extended price from there.
It's inside the-
It's inside the building.
What kind of alcohol are they planning to sell? Like, just bottles of beer or mixed drinks?
No, just, just beer. So it's really no different than what we, uh, authorized for the rodeo and a few of the other events that take place up.
Any other discussion on the topic?
Does your guys' uh, insurance in a way extend or is there any issue on that?
No. Are you, are you asking about increased liability?
Go over to- All right, does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the-
Motion for agenda item twenty-two dash zero one four. Is there a second? One second. Councilman Johnson has seconded the motion. Hearing none of all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item agenda twenty-two dash zero one four for the C N B special event license. Department heads, um, do you have anything else to add?
I was just gonna say the rec center, moving along, to the gym floor and tomorrow, or it'll be delivered tomorrow. Probably be at a month or so before it gets installed. Just got other variables to work around, gotta get put up or put down. Um, hopefully the paint is done here in the next three to four weeks. So hopefully we'll have nice facility, you know, all finished up here in the next couple of months.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, I'd like to reiterate, thank you guys for continued support on the two items that were on these departments tonight. I know that, um, number one, we were very pleased when City Minister brought this up to me at the end of last year, you know, and I appreciate your guys' support, state's support for this. Both of the people as well, anything else, I'm sure that, that belongs to my staff, but it's really, in the current climate and everything going around, it's it means the world to us. Thank you, thank you all very much.
You're, you're very welcome. Appreciate that. Um, any other department heads that are here tonight? See you. City attorney?
I don't have anything. Unless you have anything for me.
Does anybody have anything for the city attorney? Okay. City clerk?
I don't have anything.
City administrator?
All right, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, last meeting, uh, you guys approved the, uh, the funds for the airport hangar concrete. Um, so at that time, we were under the assumption that the hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars was gonna come directly to us. Um, it has now been revealed that it's not gonna come directly to us, and we're gonna have to apply for it. Um, although it's allocated, uh, hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the next four years. Uh, it's gonna be very much like our entitlement funds and it's gonna require some type of match. So we, uh, the approval was contingent on us receiving the funds, so that project is gonna be tabled until, um, the money filters down from federal government to the state and then back out, so, you know, uh, so that the, the A W O S and the concrete and the hangar is gonna be tabled for a while. And, uh, I am waiting on, uh, N C R I to send me an updated agreement with the liquidated damages, the timeline and the cost estimate. I did, I talked to them last week and I expect to get that any, any day now and we're beyond the thirty days, so I'll sign that once I get that agreement in hand. Uh, the city is gonna receive approximately forty-five thousand dollars in insurance money from the storm, uh, from storm damage. Most of that, the trees at the cemetery and golf course, I think close to thirty thousand of, of the, of that money is coming from tree replacement. The, um, it's, uh, C clip time. I, I did advise, uh, Kirk and Michael today that all of our twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three monies are allocated. So unless there is a particular project that meets the C clip requirements that you can think of, we're gonna pass on any applications this cycle. Um, and, uh, we have a, uh, a firm that's gonna, he came once, he's gonna come back again and try to fix this in here. So it's a, they, they do audio visual stuff for the chamber, for council chambers, so. Um, this is pretty unsatisfactory, what we're trying to work through now. Um, he sent me a proposal and I, I thought it was too light. I mean, it was only just, it was about fifteen hundred dollars for what he had proposed, and every other proposal I'd ever seen was more in the ten thousand dollar range, so he, he's going back to the drawing board and try to get us a system that you can hear, and I don't have this speaker popping and, and, and this ridiculous, uh, setup that, that, that we got going, so try to make it more tenable for everybody. And I would like to request a uh, five-minute executive session to include myself, the city clerk and city attorney to discuss, uh, non-elected personnel.
We do that now or towards, towards the-
Oh, after, after their comments and the mirrors.
All right. Anything else?
That is it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Um, city council? Councilman Johnson?
Chief, quick question, question. Um, the business, I don't really know if you would consider may or is it legally considered a business district? Per se, I mean, is there any as far as like vehicles parking straight across the curb? During business hours?
So instead of parking the diagonal, they're parking right there? Like old trailer sort of thing? So technically that's legally parked, and it's through the statute, so if somebody were to hit them, park like that, they're covered as a legally parked vehicle where the person striking them would be the one at fault. If they were to park obviously out into the street, then they would, it's obviously improper parking. Now, we do have some semi stop on the road that load, not load, which falls under different statute, it's allowable. Somebody's parking front of the street to run into that, it's not loading or unloading something out of their vehicle, then that doesn't count. So if the citizen looking them in, they're loading them, them hamburgers into their, from, they're like under prescription from F and M or from side, that doesn't count, they would have to park if it's stopping the road. As far as parking through the diagonal spots, if that would be, it's still considered proper, it's still proper legal parking because they have a trick.
Okay? Yes. Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Coats?
Yes, someone asked me if we could have chickens in the city limits.
No, ma'am.
Could that ever change?
She asked, uh, someone had approached her about having chickens within the city limits. And, and that, so that very topic comes up in every city in Kansas, I believe. Um, and the problem with it is not the chickens, but once we allow one type of livestock in town, then it makes it almost impossible to limit the, but then someone's gonna want goats and then eventually we got-
That would be me.
Yeah.
I'd like a goat.
So, um, no ma'am, by ordinance, we do not allow, uh, those within the city limits.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Councilman Chris Bill?
Um, Rusty, what's going on on A M I?
Uh, I wish, Joe, yeah. Uh, so Joe and Angela had another meeting this, well, last week and then again today to, uh, to go over profiles. There was a delay in, um, access to the, uh, the radios. So the timeline has shifted to the right a couple of months, but I think it was back in December. Uh, Suez was here again and, um, went through the last phase of, of planning. We have the, the towers equipped now. Um, and all the meters that need to be replaced have been identified. Uh, there's a, um, strategy in place to, to get it done. Where, before we thought that we would kind of have a March completion, we're now looking at maybe late summer. Uh, but it, it is, it's continuing to move.
Good. Councilman Renard?
I ain't got nothing.
Okay.
One more.
One more?
Ms. Hanson.
Councilor Hanson?
I just have a couple of questions. Where are we at on the, um, detention points? Wasn't it last meeting he had like seventeen days left to complete?
Yeah, so we had a meeting this morning and, uh, and so he has hit another layer of rock. And K dot is, their geology, their geologist was here today. He's coming tomorrow to do core sampling. And, um, to be quite candid, it's an absolute mess. And we've got a, uh, we've, we've kind of got a long road ahead of us to come to a solution. And, um, I don't anticipate it being non-contentious because we're, we're at the point now, at least from my perspective, that, um, the original plan just, we, we can scrap that because every time, uh, the more he digs, the more he finds something, uh, he doesn't think that, that the water, so he can't, where you see the standing water, he can't get any equipment in there to level that out, to smooth it out. Um, the basin can't be seeded as long as there's standing water. I informed him that, that the city's not gonna accept the project until we have some kind of solution on the seeding.
And is this costing us more money if he goes over his days, or how does that work?
Um, so yes and no. Uh, and Wayne can probably articulate the liquidated damage schedule better than I can, but, um, I, I think really the only cost that it incurs us is the inspection fees for Kirk and Michael if he goes over his days. Um, however, we, uh, we had a discussion and the mayor can chime in because he was with me today, um, on working days versus cleanup days and liquidated damages associated with both. Um, there was discussion about coming back to us with another change order and another price increase to remove the rock. Um, it's, uh, it, it, it is not a, um, a good situation that we have. Everyone agrees it should have been the simplest project that any of us have ever done and it is, it's just turned into an absolute nightmare, but the contractors continuing to, to work, uh, K dot has, has brought in the, the geologist, like I said. Um, Kirk and Michael's continuing to try to negotiate way aheads with the contractor. And, um, that's, I'm sure that's not the answer anyone wanted to hear, but to, uh, just be candid, it's, uh, we're, we're not in a good spot with that project.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I've had several residents voice complaints, um, about Verl, what he actually is doing, what he's accomplishing, where they see him driving around all the time, they see him having coffee. They're not seeing things get done. And I just said I would relay that and figure out what, I know a lot of his stuff we're not seeing, but they want to know what he's doing.
Yeah, and a lot of the, I mean, a lot of what he does is little stuff and in lieu of, of writing someone a citation, he, he's going door to door and speaking to them and they're fixing the siding on the house or, or covering the windows or, um, honestly, I, I don't generally get too involved in Verl's stuff until there's a big issue. Um, because most of the stuff is, is pretty uh, rudimentary and people know they gotta cut their grass. He tells them to cut their grass. Um, we have our habitual offenders that no matter what we ever do and however many citations we write, they're never gonna get any better. Um, but I can get him to at least provide a monthly report or something to the, at least for the packet.
I think that would help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Hanson?
No, that's it.
All right, um, on to the mayor. Um, gonna give you an update on Cowtown Days. So I'll probably want to write pretty fast here. Got your pen ready? Well, you know, trying to make a real, trying to take you down a three-month road that we've been down. So the chamber, the board of the chamber congress decided it wasn't in their mission to have this festival anymore. And so they, uh, made the decision they weren't gonna pursue it anymore. So at that point, we engaged or got in touch with Droger's Hall of Fame, uh, that group and began discussions of whether they, whether or not they would host Cowtown Days. So there were at least three or four meetings, uh, Mr. Barner, that was there, former mayor Kennedy was there, I was there. Um, finally, I think it's, today is Monday, so it was last week, their board, Droger's Hall of Fame board voted against hosting Cowtown Days. For a lot of reasons, uh, it was unanimous. Uh, we'd had at least three meetings, so they, they, a lot was budgetary. Um, they voted against it. So the next day I got in, uh, in touch with Tammy McReeby. And so plan B is we're going to form a committee. Uh, the committee meets tomorrow night at six-thirty and we're gonna begin discussing, um, really forming a Cowtown committee to have Cowtown Days in twenty-twenty-two. Don't know what that looks like, don't know who's gonna be involved, don't know how much interest there will be, um, but the, there is going to be at least an attempt to have Cowtown Days in twenty-twenty-two and begin discussing what twenty-twenty-three looks like. So, um, there is light at the end of the tunnel, that people will step up. And I believe they will, there'll be several people, the meeting is, if anybody's interested, tomorrow night, six-thirty at the chamber. And, uh, so just kind of a formation of a committee. Uh, hopefully, it just sounds fairly promising, but we did spend quite a bit of time with the Droger's Hall of Fame to see if they would be interested in hosting it. They had a lot of natural, uh, parallels uh, that might have worked for them in the end, they just, uh, decided not to go down that road. They did decide to be a strong partner of Cowtown Days. So that's something that they did commit to and they have been for years. So that's kind of where we are with Cowtown Days, so. Um, I should know more tomorrow night, six-thirty. So that is that. Uh, so, does anybody have any questions about that?
I have a couple of questions. So is there a designated chair for this committee at present? And what is the city's role in this? Because I thought before we had said we did not want to play a part.
No, the, the city is not involved at all. I mean, no involvement whatsoever. I'm just there to kind of become the transition piece. Uh, there's not even a chair. It's just a, it's just an initial meeting. Um, to see if we can move forward, really, it's tomorrow night. Um, and we, we've been very clear, the city won't be involved. If you want to be involved personally, that's fine, but as far as the city, no involvement whatsoever.
And will we be giving some money to this? Do we have like a celebrations line item or something like that?
Yes, ma'am. We have the, uh, the six thousand dollars that we, uh, generally donate annually for, it was for fireworks in Cowtown. This is, uh, fireworks are gonna be going. At the council's discretion, the six thousand would go to the Cowtown celebration.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Brad, Laura, Amber, Kelvin, Stacy, thank you for coming in. Appreciate all your comments, so we'll hopefully probably see you again. I, I guess we'll discuss this and it'll be on another agenda, this item. Plus a little bit more and, um, you know it.
Um, it may be the fourteenth, the next meeting.
Valentine's Day is the next meeting, so that's probably most likely. Fourteen, Brian. All right, the next item on our agenda, the executive session.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Second session, yes?
I make a motion to go into executive session with the governing body, city administrator, city clerk and city attorney, uh, to discuss matters of non-elected personnel and to come out at six forty-five.
Ms. Coats has made a motion and Mr. Strickfield has seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All those opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Who carries to go in the executive session now to come out at six forty-five?